Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The North Ridgeville City Council Committee of the whole meeting is now in session. Today is Monday, August 4th, 2025. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all members of council are present this evening. We also have Law Director Moriarty as well. Additionally, from the administration, we have Mayor Kevin Corcoran, Planning Director Kim Lieber, as well as Director of Finance April Wilkerson, and the Assistant Clerk of Counsel Fajabi-Gallam as well. At a recent council meeting, I referred 2025-104 to committee for further discussion. That ordinance was introduced by Mayor Corcoran, so at this time I will turn it over to him and ask for some additional details and information.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to turn this over to Russ and Kim. There is a PowerPoint presentation to lead you through this discussion. If you remember, Russ was here talking to you guys a couple of months ago. And so this is just kind of a replay a little bit, but these guys can fill you in. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Members of Council. We're here tonight to talk about the North Ridgeville Community Improvement Corporation and also the specific legislation before council tonight and what that does and what we're asking council to consider. I forgot I had the clicker in my hand. Okay. I think probably a good refresher is to just start with the basics, which is what is a community improvement corporation? And the person best equipped to do that is sitting to my right. This is Russ Bautis, and he is our outside counsel with Squire Patton Boggs and who is an expert at economic development tools and has been leading us through this process. So, Russ, if you could?
Sure. Thank you, Kim, and thank you, Mr. President. What a CIC is, is a community improvement corporation. They're established under Ohio law, and in its fundamental sense, a CIC is a nonprofit organization, a corporation under Ohio law. And those can be established without any city action. What we're doing today and their purpose is to provide economic, industrial, commercial, and civil development, as in the slide. And I can give a lot of examples and we can talk some more about different things that CICs normally do. The legislation before you today is to designate that nonprofit as the CIC for the city of North Ridgeville. What that does is give the CIC a few additional powers and a few additional responsibilities. The main power that it gives is the ability to transfer property to the CIC without having to do competitive bidding, if that's what the city chooses to do. It is also designated by the city. It does become subject to the sunshine laws. So that's a responsibility that it assumes. As a normal nonprofit, it is not subject to Ohio sunshine laws. Once you designate it as your entity, your CIC for the city, it becomes subject to the sunshine laws. There is one minor difference. Under the sunshine laws, there's a bit more protection for private financial information for somebody who might be seeking economic development support. You know, lots of CICs are used in different ways. Some do revolving loan funds and things like that. And so if people are asking for financial help or support, they might have to permit, submit private financial information, and the law provides a bit more protection to keep that type of private information private that would not be available to a city. But other than that, it's subject to the same open meetings, public records laws, so the minutes are recorded. Anyone can show up to their meetings, and all of their documents would be public the same way they would be if they were city documents.
Before we move to the next slide, CICs are fairly common in Ohio, so this is not a new type of entity. Many of our neighbors have CICs. I know the city of Strongsville and Beechwood use theirs quite a bit. Avon Lake has one, North Canton, their webpage is really nice. North Olmsted formed one recently, and also Cogga Falls where you are.
Yep. I served on the board of the CIC for Cogga Falls when I was Law Director for many years.
So just a little bit of background, as the mayor mentioned, during the budget hearings, Russ joined us and one of, I think, the last days of budget hearings, we had a fairly detailed presentation to council about what a community improvement corporation is. And then also included in my budget for 2025 was some funding to help us initiate through outside council what the steps required to formulate a CIC. So shortly after the first of the year, Russ, on behalf of the city, had filed our Articles of Incorporation, and we received a letter back in March that we were an official entity. So we had our first kickoff meeting in May, I believe it was. I wanted to point out that a majority of the board members are city officials, so this is intentional to ensure that there's going to be an alignment between the CIC and the goals of the city. The bylaws allow for a composition between five and nine members, and a minimum of five have to be city officials. So again, there will always be that heavy city representation. I think by law it has to be at least two-fifths, but we went further than that. And also just to point out that board members serve without compensation, so there's no additional payment that any city official would receive for participating in a CIC. All right, Russ, well, you already started talking about these benefits of designating a CIC. Maybe you can go into a little bit more depth on each one of these.
Happy to. Again, CICs are nonprofit corporations that can do anything under Ohio nonprofit law. So what is usually done is, they're very different depending on what the needs of the city that they serve are. So a very common and effective tool for CICs is if people are looking, or if the community is looking to gain control over property, CIC, they still would have to have a meeting and approve it and do those things, but they can usually move more quickly. So if a city wishes to use that as a tool, one option would be a city could do its normal process, provide funding to the CIC for that purpose, and then the CIC, when land would become available, could quickly capture or put an offer in on that property and move more quickly than cities usually can. So that's one of the more common uses. Another thing is, you know, a lot of grants and things for economic development. Often sometimes, you know, grants for those type of things are very formulaic, and if you get points if multiple parties apply, may seem a little silly, but it works. A lot of times, cities will then have their CIC apply with them. So now you have two separate entities applying. You can get more points for certain types of grants because you're showing collaboration. And your CIC is bringing new people on the board. You have city representation, but then you can also have community members or things like that on the board as well. So it shows collaboration, and sometimes grants, granting authorities like to see that cooperation. The other idea with CICs, and this kind of goes way back to when CICs were created, not to bore you with a history lesson, but going all the way back into the 60s, when governments were not really involved in economic development at all, and a lot of Ohio jobs were moving to the Carolinas. The state made a policy decision to try to get more involved. That's when Article 8, Section 16 was added to the Constitution, and then the laws that led to the CICs and everything were bought in. And it was this idea that cities had not been engaged in economic development. So CICs were kind of this partnership mold where business leaders could work with city leaders to find ways to partner to create economic opportunities within their communities. And so that was a way that could kind of come together in a public, in a public means, because it's public records and it's open meetings, but also in a more nimble, quick, effective way than the traditional government structure. So I think that...
I think it's important to point out that the designation or creation of the CIC, I think, also aligns with the goals of our master plan. As we looked in our economy chapter, we identified the need to be more proactive in preserving or acquiring land for employment uses or for promoting tools to promote small business. And so this CIC creation and the designation as the economic agent of the city, I think, very much aligns with what we envisioned in our master plan of adding tools to our economic development toolbox. So, you know, Russ mentioned that a CIC allows that entity and the city, by extension, to act more quickly on economic development opportunity. So yes, a CIC can act nimbly, but authority is not unlimited. So, Russ, can you talk a little bit about the plan and agreement, how that functions, and what the role of council is in oversight?
Absolutely. The CIC is a separate legal entity, so it does not have any access to city funds unless they are approved by the city process to give them funds like any other private entity. So by designating it as an entity, it does not give it automatic or additional access to city funds. That has to go through the normal process of city appropriation of funds to the CIC. The adoption of the plan is just a strictly requirement of the code. That is something that for you to be able to make property transfers back and forth without competitive bidding, the law just requires the adoption of that plan. Historically, if the city were to issue bonds, so take on debt under Chapter 165 for like economic development purposes, the law used to require that you also have this plan approved for that purpose. That law was changed a couple of years ago, but that's also where the history of that plan comes from. And the plan is pretty much just a general goal and statement of trying to cooperate to create economic opportunities within the community. You know, council can request, you know, reports and any kind of updates from the CIC. And any money, again, coming from the city to the CIC would have to be approved through appropriation and normal process. The CIC can seek dollars on its own, whether it's through grants or other sources outside of the city that they would then have control over. But any money that would come from the city would have to follow through the normal process. I think it is important to note that CICs are subject to audit, and that's by the Ohio auditor, just the same way that the city is. And then also the sunshine laws and public records laws apply. Now, I will note, you know, with the sunshine laws and the open meeting laws, they apply the same way they apply to the city. So the CIC can do things like going into executive session for the purpose of property or purchasing property or things like that. So the same way the open meetings laws apply to the city, they would apply to the CIC as well.
So I know we've touched on some of these, but I thought we could expand a little bit more on key powers of the CIC. Perhaps we've already talked about the acquisition or disposition of property would be a key function. Administration of business support programs, so, you know, grants or loans. I know that in your community, you had like a revolving loan program and thought you could kind of talk about how that benefited businesses in your community.
Absolutely. One thing that the city of Cogga Falls did was they created a revolving loan fund. And the city, through its council, made the policy decision to provide a grant of $1 million to the CIC for the purpose of, you know, seeking small business loans to help them buy equipment under job creation and things along those lines. The other thing that the CIC would do is if you maybe had a person who was trying to invest in the community, and maybe they had a bank loan that was paying for the majority of the project, but there was a small gap, the CIC was then able to provide, you know, like gap finding. Maybe someone wants to make a million dollar investment. Maybe a bank was comfortable giving them an $800,000 loan. Maybe they had $100,000, but they still needed another $100,000. That program was designed to kind of provide the other $100,000 to take the project to go, to make it happen. And they have done a couple of grants, not a ton, a couple of loans. They've redone some office space and renovated office space, things like that, to bring in, I think it was a small law firm, actually, into the city. So that's a common tool. And you might ask, well, why do it that way? Why not do it through the city? That came back to that sunshine law. The one difference is that the CIC is able to get financial information and keep it not to be available to the public. It has more protections when people are seeking economic development assistance. So if somebody, if you're going to make a loan to somebody, you're going to want to see their tax returns. You're going to want to see their bank statements, but you're not really interested in that becoming a public record. So the CIC helps. The law is designed to provide a bit more protection for that type of private information. CICs are also involved in a lot of more complicated deals. They might hold property for one reason or another versus the city. Also, sometimes the people involved in the deals, because they're realtors or bankers, the city might just want them to be involved so that those folks have all the information and can provide just advice to the city and their thoughts on different projects.
I know in a couple instances, you know, we talk about leveraging private or philanthropic investment alongside public dollars, which I guess is a long way of saying that CICs might be an eligible entity where the city is not for certain types of funding. In small ways, we've experienced that. I know Healthy Places Grant required the city to partner with another entity to even be able to apply. I know Cleveland Foundation and other foundations often have grants available to economic or nonprofit entities that don't go directly to municipalities because governments have other sources of funding. So I think creating that synergy between the city and the CIC will have the potential of opening up more doors of funding that would benefit North Ridgeville. And then another use of CIC, which is a little different, I guess, promoting community engagement through promoting or hosting local events and supporting neighborhood improvement projects. So in some communities, they really use their CIC to create more of the community vibe. They maybe have an event series or a concert series, or they are involved in a downtown or a district, or they have some aspect where they create programming that would like draw people to the community and promote, you know, economic development through that kind of activity planning. So can you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. And that's something that you'll see. Like, let's say you're going to do a community event in a downtown area or a certain neighborhood. You might have certain local businesses that are interested in supporting that. It can get a little bit complicated if the city is paying for some sort of event or activities, and then companies are wanting to donate, and then does the money come to the city? Like, how does that work? The CIC provides a good tool where companies then, if they want to support a particular event, can make donations to the CIC. The CIC can then spend the funds to help put the infrastructure together for that community event that you need. And then if the city, you know, that way the city doesn't end up having to support it, or if the city chooses to support it, it could also give those funds either directly or through the CIC as well. So it's a good tool to, it's a good mechanism to get donations from community businesses to support community projects.
I guess this is our, a little bit of our wrap-up slide, just that there are economic development benefits to the city of North Ridgeville to adopt this ordinance and to enter into this agreement and plan with the CIC. It allows us to move a little more in a proactive manner, especially when it comes to things that require speed, like acquiring property that might be on the market that we were unaware of until the sign's in the yard. And then, you know, the world is also interested in that particular piece of property. So it helps us to, again, move with speed and to cut through a little some of the red tape involved with general government operations. Increases that speed and flexibility in business negotiations. And very importantly, as Russ pointed out, allows the CIC to keep some of that financial information confidential to give our businesses, business owners, some confidence that their, you know, business financial information is not going to be attached to some meeting minutes or available to the general public. So in general, you know, our goal is to support job creation, to grow our tax base, and to ensure the productive reuse of property in the city. Same, you know, goals as city of North Ridgeville. And we just think that having this additional tool will help us also better compete with neighboring cities for projects or for grant opportunities. So we see a lot of positives. Hope council considers this ordinance. And we're able to take any questions that council members might have.
Okay. Thank you, Kim and Russ, for sharing that information. You mentioned the makeup of the board being city officials. Has there been consideration as far as having community members be part of the board? Whether it be a member of council or our planning commission or anything along those lines?
When we formulated the board, we formulated it with just the city officials to begin. We wanted to go through this process to have council designate and approve, you know, the CIC as the economic development arm before approaching community members to join the board. Our goal would be to target those individuals whose professional, personal experiences have some benefit, whether it be in banking or in real estate or in development, that can bring that kind of expertise to the board and provide a different lens. So that would be like a next step after this process.
Okay. But those would be general members of the community, not necessarily a member of council. Okay. And then you talked about grants. Maybe can you give some examples? You might have already given some, but as far as the types of grants that we're talking about that the CIC directly could apply for, do you maybe speak on that a little bit?
Absolutely. Number of examples. There's any kind of private foundation that, you know, won't give funds to governments, but would give to any nonprofit. So if you might have a project that fits the goals of the Cleveland Foundation or the Gunn Foundation or any foundation privately, there's also, I'm forgetting the name of it, the Streets. Thank you. Thank you. The Main Street Program has done that for like developments of like downtown. So like things where maybe you're going to ask for different funds for place making, whether it's planters, whether it's benches, whether it's, you know, just different things to, you know, improve public spaces. That is a place where CICs are usually, I would say, a bit more successful than cities when they apply for grants like that. So I would say pretty much any of the general sources of nonprofits, even some government grant programs that are through the government, they'll give additional points if you have multiple entities apply. So adding the CIC, some, as I think Kim mentioned, some require it to be a joint application. So it does help when you can have an additional CIC. And that is a reason why some communities create them, is just to have another entity supporting requests for grant support.
Okay. Thank you. Members of council, anybody have any question?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Awig?
You mentioned a lot of positives to it. Would there be some negatives to having an organization like this?
One negative is if you do acquire property and it is held in the CIC for a long period of time versus being held by the city, it is more likely to be subject to real property taxation. So if you move it, so some communities, if they might use the CIC to acquire property quickly, for the reasons Kim's pointing out, that, you know, when you're competing against other people to buy property, the CIC may be able to get it more quickly, you'll want to kind of make a decision whether it then would make sense to keep it in the CIC or transfer it to the city, just because depending on the use of it, I would probably be more likely to be taxable for real property taxation purposes. So I would just note... So I would just note that. The only other thing, though, I think it's minimal, like all things in life, right? It's always a little bit more work. You do have that annual audit with the state auditor that you need to do, so that's not what I would describe as a significant administrative burden, but it's a burden and something that you need to be mindful of. Generally, I think, other than that, just the administrative burden, the potential for real property taxation, if you have property held in the entity are the two that come to mind as, I think, potential negatives.
Anybody else on council have any questions?
Yeah, through the chair. When it comes to land acquisition, is there a point person, a purchasing agent, or does the CIC act as one body, they all vote on it? Or who does, who makes the investment into sound decisions? Like, who's leading that charge?
A CIC operates like any other nonprofit organization, so there would be a board on the nonprofit. They could pass a resolution designating somebody, or hiring a realtor, or, you know, however they wanted to approach it. So it would be a determination by the board of the CIC that would make that decision, just kind of operates as any other nonprofit under the law.
Okay. And you, I think you said this already, but when they do have their meetings, those minutes are made public?
Yeah, they're public meetings, and the minutes are kept and are a public record.
And how often do they meet?
That would be up to the CIC board. I believe they do have to meet at least once a year legally. But then you could have in your bylaws, you could require more meetings or less meetings. But...
Great. Thank you.
Mrs. Swink.
Back to the board officials. So when you decide that you're going to add more people, would it be like appointing them how we currently appoint civil service or planning commission members?
Those members would just be appointed by the board, to the board, the CIC, so council would not have a decision-making role in their appointment. That would just be simply appointed by the CIC.
So if somebody's to be removed, how would that work? The CIC, like president, would remove the member?
There is, within the bylaws, there's a procedure in place for removal.
Can we get a copy of the bylaws?
Yes.
Okay. I have one more question, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Who crafted this agreement? Was it the board? Was it the...
We did, at Squire. It's a agreement that is very similar to most CICs. It checks the legal boxes of just an agreement that has to be adopted pursuant to the code for, you probably noticed a little bit of weird wording, it's because it tracks the Ohio Revised Code of the different things that they look for. And the reason that agreement is important is just because you have a CIC, and even if you designate it, if you don't have this agreement, you're legally not allowed to transfer property to the CIC without going through your normal competitive bidding process. So usually, most CICs adopt that plan to give you that added tool. Now, obviously, if the city were going to transfer property to the CIC, that would require council approval, as it always would. It just would make council not be legally obligated to follow the revised code general requirements around public bidding for real property transfers.
Would you say this is kind of a boilerplate agreement?
Yes. Yeah, it's a boilerplate agreement.
Through the chair. I know we talked about land acquisition, you can purchase land, what about the sale of property?
A CIC is able to sell property also by acting through the board. So the board of the CIC would approve the sale of property that it wishes to sell.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaver, you have a question?
Yes, through the chair. I read through this agreement, and there's a lot of troubling language in it, quite frankly. Under Recitals, Section D, it says maintains and increases the tax valuation of property. Does this supplement the auditor's ability to do that?
It does not. All that is, is probably a legal ease way from the 1960s to say that they're trying to improve community values by encouraging economic development and increasing values within the community. The CIC has no impact on, or no direct legal impact on property taxation. It cannot raise taxes, it cannot adjust property valuations. That is all completely handled by the auditor.
Ensuring mortgage payments?
That is something that if the CIC wished to do, and if the CIC had money, it would be able to do it. That's because it's the idea of, if you had like a grant program, or something like that, that's another way that a CIC can add economic assistance. It can make guarantees and do things. Now, mind you, its guarantees only going to be worth something if it has money, and the only way it would have money is if the council through its, the city through its normal process, which includes appropriation by council, were to provide money to the CIC for that purpose, unless the CIC achieved, received that money through a different source, like a grant, like we talked about, or private donations, like we talked about. And some CICs actually have earned income through like community events, they might like rent space to food trucks, or something like that, and actually have some of their own revenue. And also, some CICs with revolving loan funds actually make money off of interest. So they have money to kind of do other things with based off the operation income that the CIC creates through its activities.
Well, if no one's going to, else is going to ask, I'm going to ask. We're being asked to put a income tax increase on the ballot because we supposedly, allegedly, are having financial difficulties. Why are we spending money we don't have on something we don't need?
A CIC doesn't have like an ongoing cost, I would say. I guess with the, with the CIC, there's no obligation to fund it, there's no obligation. It's just if the council and the city would see a need, whether it's property acquisition that makes sense, it makes it easier for the city to achieve that goal. But it doesn't require, the CIC cannot require the city to acquire property, the CIC cannot require that the city provide it funds, it has no rights along those lines. It's just a tool that's available to the city if the city chooses to use it.
Well, Ms. Lieber stated that she had placed money into this, so we do have money invested in it.
The funds that we've used so far have just been in services from Squire to help us in this process of formulating it.
This whole thing sounds very speculative to me. Do you know why the one in Stark County failed?
I am not familiar with why that one failed. I know that they often use their port authority through, for a lot of the same purposes of a CIC. I am not aware of why, if the one in Stark County failed, I'm not familiar with why.
Do we have any questions from any other members of council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Winkle, should we go ahead?
Yeah, I have a few, as I use the news. So this entity has been formed already?
Yes.
And like with other entities, you needed bylaws or some sort of agreement in place to form that entity?
Yes, we have bylaws, code of regulations.
And that's, I think you mentioned before, you're going to provide those?
Yes.
To us? Now, the members were chosen already as part of that initial process to generate the bylaws?
Yes, some are named...
Current members?
Yes.
Who are the current five members of this board?
So four positions are named, city official positions. So the mayor, the law director, the finance director, and the planning and development director. And then, so, you know, whoever inhabits those positions today, or a year from now, or 20 years from now.
Okay. And then the funding mechanics for this, I think we talked about it a little bit earlier. The CIC can request funds from council, there's no requirement of said funds. The CIC can also explore its own options to get its own funds.
Yes.
So it's not totally reliant upon the city to function or operate. Now, altering the agreement with the CIC is dictated solely by the CIC unless it's requested by our law department or council, correct?
Can you say that again?
The CIC, but you have in Exhibit A here?
Yes.
I think it spells out that changes to such agreement are only made by the CIC itself or by request of the legislative body, which is us, and/or the administration? Is that right?
Either party can request changes to, it's just like any other agreement. Either party could request changes, but obviously both parties would agree to any changes in the agreement.
So the agreement could be altered and changed without, outside of the legislator body of the city that so chose?
No. It would require a council approval to make any amendments. Any amendment to the plan would require council's approval.
Because when I read it, it said "or" to me, like "and" can do that, but that's fine. I'm not a lawyer, so I just wanted to make sure of that. And then, so the property is acquired by the CIC, is owned by the CIC, it's all such time it wants to transfer to the city and/or sell it on its own behalf, it makes all those decisions. So we're talking about speed, so the whole, one of the biggest things, like I could go after property fast, avoid having to take a month and a half in the legislative process to do so, and I understand that, but without having a decent amount of money in there, you can't do anything fast without appropriating money from council to buy said property. How does that work? Like, what is the goal to have, as far as a balance, to try to do those kind of things? Because you would have to get funding from council, which is right back with the legislative process again, so I'm curious as to how that works at other places.
Lots of different ways. I would say that it's not uncommon that if a city is looking to acquire certain parts of property, the city council could, or the city could choose to appropriate a certain amount of funds to the CIC, in that they could have any agreement that that's what the CIC has to use the funds for. So that way, the CIC, though the CIC can make the offer, the, it's kind of like, almost like a restricted grant, right? The funds come with strings that you have to use it for this, so the funds would then move to be with the CIC, with the clear contractual arrangement that it has to be used for the acquisition of certain property. And then, when the property becomes available, the CIC could then move quickly to place an offer and things like that, and have the funds.
So thank you. And then, just as a general comment, you know, I'm more of a checks and balances kind of guy, so if this is city money being spent by a entity that was formed outside of council, and its members were chosen outside of council, and no council members are present on this board, and the property decisions are made completely outside of council, there's no legislature or council check at all?
I would just, I'll give a quick story, if you don't mind, that kind of, I think, attributes to that question a little bit. There was a community where a CIC had some funds that they had, for whatever reason. Some, I think they had accrued on their own, some had been given by council, and the CIC used the funds for something that council did not appreciate. I can tell you that for the following decade, council did not appropriate any more funds to the CIC, which is an effective check. Then I think council then changed their mind because they saw the CIC doing some good things, wanted to participate, so then did start appropriating funds to the CIC. So when you mentioned the check, I would say that, you know, council would be their discretion whether to give funds, and like with any grant, if there are restrictions that they think are important, that's a positive, that's something they can do. The CIC may say, those restrictions don't work, so we don't want the money. I mean, again, it's, you know, it would be both entities, but that would be something that could be discussed between, you know, the two entities.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Swink.
Bouncing off of Mr. Winkles, so if we were to give the CIC money, April, would it just be an appropriation amendment, or would it be actual legislation?
An appropriation amendment is legislation. It would go through that exact same process that we do for any dollars we spend in the city.
Are there any plans to add this to our budget for November?
We haven't gone through our budgetary process for the upcoming year yet, so I haven't seen anything come through.
Well, has it been discussed with you guys as the board members?
We have not discussed financing.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to just ask again about the makeup of the board. Kim, you had mentioned in your initial comments that there are other cities in our area that, you know, have these CICs in place, one of them being Avon Lake. And I know that in Avon Lake, their board is made up of the mayor, the economic development director, and a member of council. The remaining members of their board have to be non-elected officials or non-city, you know, employees, and those members are appointed by council. I'm just curious, you know, why have we decided to set it up differently?
I believe that, you know, every CIC is a little bit different, and maybe Russ can better speak to the different compositions, but, you know, the, in my economic development role, I see it largely as an administrative task, and I felt that those, you know, other administrative officials that are involved in the day-to-day execution of a master plan or implementation of policy were well-suited. And I saw, you know, council's role of oversight through appropriations is kind of a consistent and continuation of just how we work as a city government, where the administration executes and council is the overall policymaker and appropriator. So to me, that seems an appropriate composition for the board, but I'm sure other communities have different ways that they handle it.
I would say that you see it all over the map. There absolutely are cities that have members of council, as you pointed out, on the board. I would say the majority of the ones that I work with and am familiar with, the majority of them are mainly administrative and community leaders, usually bankers, realtors, and it also depends on what the CIC is doing, like what its goal is. If they're doing a revolving loan program, you have a lot of bankers usually, and then the administration, if you're looking to do community events, to be candid, you tend to have people who have a lot of time and are willing to volunteer a lot, and if you're looking to acquire a lot of property, you tend to have appraisers, or realtors, or people like that. So I think the board usually takes the form of what they're trying to do in the community to get the best, you know, makeup to achieve that. I will say, the reason I think a lot of communities have a heavy administrative group is because that way, if they need to have meetings, to be quite candid, they can have them during the day, and everybody's already there. They have to be noticed in their public meetings, so anyone can come, but I think just for the ability to move quickly and things like that, most just use, have a majority or a quorum that come from people who are usually at city hall every day, is what I see.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Swink.
I do agree with you. I do believe that maybe we should have this as part of our standing committee members, like we're safety committee or finance committee. I do believe that council should have to have one appointed board member. It's my opinion.
Thank you, Mrs. Swink.
Through the chair.
Mr. De Vries.
So I know that the Director of Finance does a lot of reporting to the county, to the state. Once we appropriate this money to the CIC, who's responsible for tracking the financials? And who does, handles the audit? If it's audited, who handles the year-end report? And of course, as council people, we're responsible for that money if we appropriate it. So where's the liability fall if something happens?
Money that is appropriated and then transferred to the CIC is the responsibility of the CIC. A lot of cities, the treasurer of the CIC is the person who's responsible to keep it. Sometimes they will work with the city, and it'll be the finance director or something at the city that will keep track of it. It is audited by the Ohio Auditor of State, the same way the city is. Now, the auditor of state has their auditors, they also sometimes have contract auditors who do the auditing, but it is under the umbrella of the Ohio Auditor of State is who does the audits. So in other words, like most nonprofits, they get to pick their own auditor. That is not the case with the CIC that's been designated by a community, that becomes subject to the Ohio Auditor of State.
And how often does the CIC report to the Director of Finance?
There's not a statutory requirement of how often they would do that. Usually, most CICs at every board meeting, like most nonprofits, they have like a financial report that they would provide, but there's nothing statutorily that requires, I mean, some might do it yearly, some might do it twice a year or quarterly, but that would be a determination for the city and the CIC.
Okay. And a final question, I know as a banker, sometimes deals go bad, and lawsuits start flying. Let's say the CIC goes in on a deal and something goes sideways, who handles the legal aspect of it?
The CIC would decide. The CIC board would retain council, and it would be whatever, whoever that board would select, just like any other private corporation. And that's another example of why sometimes CICs are used to get into complicated deals so that if something does go wrong, it's the CIC that would get sued and not the city.
Thank you.
Do we have any additional questions? Yeah, Mr. Abins?
I'm going to piggyback onto Councilman De Vries. You said the CIC would take care of the legal responsibilities, but how would that person be paid since you really don't have a budget?
That would be, that would be, either the city would choose to provide funding to the CIC to defend the CIC. to the CIC to defend the CIC, or the CIC would not have funds. And as a lawyer, you usually don't try to sue people who don't have funds because there's nothing to recover. So I mean, that's also why sometimes people use CICs, is because it can be a, a single-purpose entity that doesn't have a lot there for people to, to get, I guess. There's not a lot there for people to try to recover from.
I'm not a lawyer, but I also know that a lot of lawyers, if they're suing the CIC, they will include everybody that surrounds that CIC, which in this case would be the city. So I'm just...
I absolutely agree that they would probably sue everyone. I just think that the opportunity, you know, given that the CIC, the documents should be drafted if you're in loans. Again, it's hard to speak to a hypothetical situation, but if there were some sort of a deal, it would normally be structured where the documents would be clear, that the city would have no liability. So that even if they did sue the city, which unfortunately, as we all know, anyone can sue anyone at any time for any reason, the city would hopefully be able to get dismissed very quickly. But again, this is a hypothetical situation.
Do we have any additional council members, excuse me, questions from the members of council?
Through the chair.
Mr. Schaefer?
I'm still baffled how a city who is having, quote, "financial problems" can suddenly find money to buy real estate. It seems like this financial crisis ebbs and flows. When they want to, I see myself going in a consistent and say, you need to raise your taxes to buy real estate. That's what it basically boils down to. Can somebody help me out with this?
Sure, I can do that. So as a council member, you should be aware that we split money that comes into the city. When we get income tax, for example, it's split eighty-five, fifteen. So eighty-five percent goes to operations, fifteen percent goes to capital improvement projects. So we've talked about this before, and I know there's been some struggles with this, but capital improvement money is used to purchase land. So when you're talking about financial difficulties in operations, that's separate and apart from capital improvement projects or the purchase of land. The two don't mix. They're separate funds. And so that, that's the simple answer.
Do we have any additional questions from council? I would like to provide an opportunity for members of the public to address council regarding this matter. If we do have anybody in the audience this evening who would like to speak, we ask that you speak from the podium and from the podium only, and you will be allowed up to three minutes. Do we have anybody in attendance who would like to speak regarding this particular matter, CIC? If you could please state your name and address for the record, at which time your three minutes will begin.
Okay. My name is Barbara Sponteller. I live over on Appian Way in North Ridge Point.
Thank you.
So this is my first meeting. Thank you for letting us come. I have three questions. One, is the CIC going to be accountable for results? Are we setting objectives that they need to maintain every year and then review them to see if they're successful? One, what if there's unbalanced influence to the members of the board? Like, none of those people are elected except for the mayor. I would feel better as a citizen to have some of my council members that we voted for to be on the board, along with some of our citizens, so the citizens can give their perspectives. And number three, how do we dissolve it if it's not successful? If it doesn't meet its objectives, if we're not making any progress, how do we dissolve it?
Would either Kim or Russ be able to maybe shed some light on that?
Yeah, I, I can start with the last one first, if that's all right. For dissolving a couple of things, the CIC corporation itself, as an Ohio nonprofit corporation, the vote, the board of the CIC would have to vote to dissolve it. However, its designation as the city of North Ridgeville's economic development entity could be taken away from the CIC by acts of council. So it's two steps. I mean, the, the nonprofit, because it exists today as an Ohio nonprofit corporation, it is just not the designee for the city for economic development purposes. So the board would decide, the board of the CIC would decide if it's dissolved, but it is council that controls when and if, and if they, they, they give and they can take away the designation for the entity for economic development purposes.
Okay, thank you. I think in regards to goals or objectives, if one of the goals of the CIC is to be able to acquire property for certain purposes, agreed upon and consistent with the city master plan, sometimes those things you can't necessarily control when land comes up for sale. So, you know, if a property came up for sale and it's in a target area for creating employment uses or, you know, future other city needs, oftentimes we're just in wait for a property to hit the market. So, you know, the metric would be if a property hit the market in an area that the city deemed was an area where we should acquire property, are we able to acquire it? That would be an objective met. I think that was the first and foremost idea of the CIC, and along the way, we've learned about other facets of the CIC in relation to grants and loans. That's going to take a little bit of capacity to develop because the CIC staff is basically here. And so, you know, there, it is a partner with the other economic development work that I do in my role. Having this as an opportunity to perhaps apply for grant funding or for other funding sources under the jurisdiction of the CIC in partnership with the city, I think, would be a great benefit. So a metric could be, have we obtained more funding? Or have we at least applied or found more sources of revenue that we could do more projects in the city? So I guess those are just a couple of the, you know, objectives and how we could measure outcomes. Again, it will take a little bit of time to develop, but, you know, again, the CIC is a tactical group, and we certainly want to tap into those community members that have expertise in areas that we'll be targeting. I don't see it as a political group. I see it as an administrative team that, that will carry on economic development activities of the city. So I think that was my, I guess, vision of the group moving forward was really a tactical group, a working group, and the composition therefore seemed appropriate to me.
Okay. Thank you both for those responses.
Can I ask one follow-up question? So, because we're removing the bidding, the competitive bidding process, that's like kind of a concern as a citizen, that there's going to be some undue influence for the members that are on the board, the CIC board, and our elected officials aren't going to have any influence on this at all whatsoever.
To, to clarify, on the waiving of the competitive bid process, that would be for property owned by the city that is going to be sold. So the council would still have, they would have to approve that sale. So that would still come to council. It doesn't get rid of, of the requirement that it come to council. It's just council could then transfer it to the, so if, for example, if council wanted to sell a piece of real property, as opposed to having to take bids and sell it to the highest bidder, they could vote to choose to sell it to the CIC because the CIC has an economic development plan that the council supports or for whatever reason the council has, that they choose to do that. So to, to be clear, council would have to approve any property transfer with the waiver of competitive bidding, but it would require council approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else in attendance who would like to speak regarding the CIC? Mr. Meeker?
Go, go, you first, ladies first.
Go ahead, ma'am. If you could state your name and address, please, for the record.
Patricia Bork, eight seven one seven Mosswood Circle. I'm totally confused, but I'll try to get some questions here. What birthed this idea? It sounds like there's an entity out here called CIC. Did the city come to you or did you go to the city? How did North Ridgeville even know this thing exists?
I think early in our presentation, we discussed that a CIC is a tool that municipalities use to extend economic development opportunity. It's certainly a tool that some of our neighboring cities have used. Strongsville is a good example, in how they've been able to leverage a CIC for property purchase or property sale, economic development programs. So when we see how other cities are utilizing community improvement corporations, and we see it as another arrow in our quiver, that if we're to have this entity in relation to the city of North Ridgeville, that it might open up grant or funding opportunities, it might give us the ability to do things we could not otherwise do on our own. It's just one more economic development strategy that supports the goals of our master plan. So it was my recommendation as the Director over Economic Development that we pursue this opportunity, and that's why I had asked Russ to make the presentation to council during the budget cycle so that council is aware and informed of our intent of moving forward with that and based upon the feedback from that. That's how we got here today.
Okay, so you went to the CIC. And you're a part of a law, law group, lawyer?
Yes, a law firm.
That's strictly CIC? It sounds like you're, you don't have a lot of knowledge.
No, thank you. Our, our law firm is a large law firm that does lots of things. My practice group represents public entities and public finance matters. So we help local governments with economic development projects, bond issuances, things like that.
So in this whole CIC realm, CIC, I'm sure you get paid something from somewhere. And that's all part of the CIC expenses.
The, the city had budgeted for outside services to assist us in properly formulating a CIC and going through the steps to designate, but we, you know, beyond these initial setup tasks, we don't have like any other planned long-term expenses for legal counsel. We do have our city attorney as a member of our CIC board.
Okay, I'll just do one more question. If you, if you see property out there, you bring it to the attention of the city, or is it the city that has property in its eyesight and comes to you?
Well, that's the thing, is I, I, I am the city and I am the CIC, so my role with the city is Director of Planning and Development. So I'm looking for opportunities consistent with our projects and the things that we've discussed with council to acquire property. And as my CIC self, I'm then able to act in a swifter manner or to leverage other tools or to apply for other resources to assist in that. So I, I wear, and other city officials on the group wear two hats, in effect.
I fibbed, I have one more question.
We are going to have to move on. We're going to get close to the council meeting start time here soon.
Can I ask it?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. If you develop it, does council have any ability to say they don't like what it is that's going to be on that property?
The, the property the city would be acquiring through, directly through the city or through the CIC would be for the purposes that we've discussed and agree with council that are the appropriate acquisition or uses of property. And then any use of property has to go through the normal planning, commission, and council process. If property is acquired and then developed, it's still subject to planning, commission, and council review or some use determination. It, it just, we just can't just use it. There needs to be a full vetting of any, and especially if it involves any use of additional city funds, those would have to be appropriated.
Thank you.
We do have a couple of minutes left, Mr. Meeker, if you would like to, please state your name and address for the record.
Bob Meeker, three two four one five Center Ridge Road, North Ridgeville, Ohio.
Thank you.
I get the CIC. I get what the city's trying to do, but as a landowner and someone that's been trying to sell my lot, I'm still fed up with the direction we're going. If you don't got, have the right board with the CIC and the city, all the landowners, Mr. Winko, Wink, Wink Properties, I can name them all the way down the line, we're all screwed because they have one goal: build a city center. Forget everyone out this way on Center Ridge, forget everyone on that way on Center Ridge. We have all these properties. Have you once reached out to us to see if there's anything you can put on our properties there for sale? No. But we buy property and put a medical center right in the middle of this little lot here, I'm telling you, the property owners that are trying to sell property are not being looked at. It's all about the city center, and if we don't have the right board, and I have a lot of friends here that are going to be upset when I'm saying, but if you don't have the right board, the property owners are going to get screwed. I've seen it for five years. I've talked to everybody here, and I've gotten nowhere. I had my property for sale for a year, not one person looked at it. You know why? Nobody wants it because it's too far away from the city center. I got Westlake, North Olmsted, Mills Creek, the most money besides, of course, Bagley Road, where people have homes. You could put tons of things there, but they don't want to do it because they're afraid of what's going on in this, in the city center. And that's going to be a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Meeker, for sharing your thoughts as well.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Winkle.
I feel like there's more discussion and more questions, and we have two minutes, so I'd like to move to table this to a future meeting that we can continue to discussion.
Second.
The motion was made by Winkle and seconded by De Vries to table twenty twenty-five dash one oh four to schedule a future meeting for additional discussion. Do we have any discussion regarding that motion? I will just say, all in favor, then yes, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Okay, then the motion carries seven to nothing to table for the time being. And with no further business on this meeting's agenda, the meeting is adjourned.